والحمد لله رب العالمين
The Secretariat, please call the rolls to determine the existence of quorum for today's business.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Roll call of the members of the BTA Parliament. Abbas Ahmad, Abbas Harun, Abbas Basit, Abu Mujib, Alamiya Liza,
Present.
Alaudin Musber, Ali Ibrahim, Ali Lanang Junior, Ali Eddy, Ambuluto Soharto, Aminuddin Abdullah Jis, Ampatuhan Bayantan, Anayatin Susana, Antau Muhammad Kelly, Arnado Merian, Asnawi Dan, Babau Ali Muntaha, Palindong Pangalian, Basman Anna Tarhata, Kandaw Bay Maleha.
Present po.
Diranggalan Hashimi, Duama Alba Sya Ilaiha, Ibrahim Ahud, Ismail Soharto, Estino Matarol, Gayak Abdova, Guera Edward, Haji Abdova Khalid, Hasim Abdova, Hassan Hatimil, Iqbal Mohajir, Ismail Rasul, Jajuri Raisa, Jakilan Muslimin, Tikhiri Albakil, Kahalan Gan Martin, Karun Faisal, Lim John Anthony, Luong Benjamin, Luong Don Mustafa, Lorena Jose, Makakuwa Abdurao, Makapahar Abdova, Makasalong Marjani, Makatanung Amrosi, Maglangit Tarhata, Malik Hamid, Mantawel Bayling, Mastora Esyak, Matalam Jafar Apollo Mikael, Awalil Amil Bahar, Mendoza Freulen, Mitimbang Michael, Mitimbang Tawakal, Miswari Abdul Karim, Miswari Norredha, Mitmog Rasol Junior, Bunius Hussein, Uralon Swae, Pakasam Ubaidah, Pak Abdul Wahab, Pangandaman Nabila Margarita,
Present.
Arkasio Randolph, Piang Ramon Senior, Ramos Jamila, Salindab Saed, Salik Ali, Sangki Ali, Semao Mariaser, Semaromyo, Shek Said, Silungan Aida, Sinurinding Kaniel Junior, Sulaiman Ali, Tago Paisalin, Tan Nabil, Usman Anspar, Utu Basir, Uyoyod Siti Fahani, Yakub Muhammad.
Bismillahirobbilasalim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mr Speaker, with forty-seven members of the parliament physically responded to the call, and three responded via Zoom. We have a total of fifty members of the parliament responded both physical and virtual. Sir Speaker, would therefore certify the presence of quorum. Thank you, Mr Speaker.
With the certification of the Secretary General as to the existence of a quorum, this session is now called to order. Before the floor leader takes the floor, the Speaker of the Parliament has tasked me to deliver a short message for all of us here at the Parliament. The Speaker had really committed to open this year's first plenary session. However, there is really a very abrupt call for him to attend to, and therefore he was not able to join us for today's first session of the year. However, he has tasked me to deliver his message. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. First of all, let me welcome all of you to the opening of our Parliament's first regular session for 2023. I know that many of us are still reeling from the post-holiday euphoria, but there is much work to be done, and we are duty-bound to fulfill them in the soonest possible time. I am hopeful, though that since the holidays have somehow energized and rejuvenated us, we will be equipped with fresher and newer ideas that will be invaluable as we go about our tasks and duties for the remainder of our terms. Ladies and gentlemen, colleagues, our remaining tasks have not changed, but our timelines have. In other words, we are now working on a much shorter timeframe, although our priority legislative agenda are still halfway through from completion. Thus, I encourage every one of you to speed things up. Time is of the essence, my dear colleagues, and it would be apt to remind ourselves that we are only here until 2025. We cannot afford to cram things at the last minute. We need an extra time after we have completed our tasks to enable us to fine-tune or revise the end results, if and when such modification is warranted. But my earnest plea to everyone, to act with dispatch is not equivalent to act with undue haste. While we aspire for speed, prompt, and promptness in our work, we cannot sacrifice its quality and excellence. We should always ensure that our priority legislative agenda will be a byproduct of comprehensive consultations and deliberations with our primary stakeholders, the technical experts, the partners in the public and private sectors, our constituents, and the various local government units. We have to reach out to all sectors, even those who oppose the transition government. Because even in the harshest of our critics, has something to contribute for the benefit of the Bangsa Moro. We cannot exclude them because they are part of the diversity of our homeland. The diversity within our organization is not much of a problem because of the prevailing harmony among us. We are bonded by a common desire to help our people and achieve their dreams and aspirations. I have observed and seen our works in recent months, and I am very satisfied and delighted on how you were able to work together, even if you have differences in opinions and perspectives. The orientation of our neophyte members also helped to foster harmony among us because it did not only allow them to be acquainted with the intricacies of their tasks, but more importantly, it gave them the chance to know and be friends with their colleagues. So this I say to you, continue to act with love and respect and in unison with your colleagues. And if you embrace it by heart, there is no task that we cannot achieve, no matter how difficult it is. There is no dream that we cannot reach, no matter how far-fetched it is. There is no obstacle that we cannot hurdle, no matter how high it is. For some of us who are already in the twilight of our ages, whose physical stamina is waning on a daily basis, we no longer aspire for anything except that we leave a lasting legacy of genuine peace and development to the Bangsa Moro. But we cannot do it alone. It is up to you, the succeeding generation of Bangsa Moro parliamentarians, to help us fulfill that noble legacy. Be proud and regale yourself with the thought that you are about to be a part of such history. You and me are chosen here for a reason, through Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala's grand design. It is a sin to squander that opportunity. It is a sin to squander that opportunity. The only way that we can show our gratitude to the Almighty is to ensure that every Bangsa Moro is given his due that he rightfully deserves. Again, good afternoon and mabuhay po tayong lahat. Floor Leader.
Bismillah. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. My courtesy is to the presiding speaker, Deputy Speaker Omar Semma. My colleagues in the Bangsa Moro Parliament, magandang hapon po. Um, Mr. Speaker, the first item in the order of business is the reading and approval of Journal of the previous session. I move to dispense with the reading of the minutes, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous session. It has been seconded. There being objection, the motion is approved.
I move to approve the Journal of the previous session subject to style, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to approve the Journal of the previous session subject to style. It has been seconded. The motion is approved.
On the reference of business, there being no bills on first reading, we move on to resolutions. First resolution is proposed resolution number five. We request the Secretary General to please read the title, the author and co-authors thereof.
The Secretariat is directed to read the title of the first proposed resolution, including the name of the authors and co-authors.
Proposed Resolution Number Five entitled, "A Resolution Defining the Representation of Other Sectors in the Council of Leaders as an Intergovernmental Relations Body," as provided under the Bangsa Moro Organic Law, BOL. Author, Member of the Parliament, Bayantan Ampatuhan. Co-authors, Members of the Parliament, Amil Bahar, Mawalin, Liza Alamiya, Soharto Ambuluto, Rasol Mitmog Junior, Don Mustafa Luong, and Rasul Ismail.
Mr. Speaker, I move to refer proposed resolution number five to the Committee on Rules.
There is a motion to refer proposed resolution number zero five to the Committee on Rules. There is a motion to refer proposed resolution number zero five to the Committee on Rules, and it's seconded. There being no objection, the motion is approved.
Second item is proposed resolution number one two seven. May we request the Secretary General to please read the title, the author and co-authors.
The Secretariat is directed as requested.
Proposed Resolution Number One Two Seven entitled, "A Resolution Urging the Government of the Day to Constitute and Operationalize the Council of Leaders pursuant to Section Nine, Article Six of Republic Act Number Eleven Zero Fifty-four" and providing funds therefore, thereof. Author, Member of the Parliament, Susana Anayatin. Co-authors, Members of the Parliament, Don Mustafa Luong, Muhammad Kelly Antao, Suarto Angboluto, Hatimil Hassan, Rasool Mitmug Junior, Jafar Apollo Mikael Matalam, Tawakal Midtimbang, and Khalid Haji Abdouan.
Mister Speaker, I move to refer proposed resolution number one two seven to the Committee on Rules.
There is a motion to refer proposed resolution number one two seven to the Committee on Rules. It's been seconded, the motion is approved.
Next proposed resolutions are proposed resolution number one four one and proposed resolution number one four three. May we request the Secretary General to please read the titles and the authors and co-authors respectively of the two resolutions.
The Secretariat is directed to read the said proposed resolution, including the name of the authors and co-authors.
Proposed Resolution Number One Hundred Forty-one entitled, "A Resolution Expressing the utmost appreciation of the Bangsa Moro Parliament to His Excellency, President Ferdinand Rualdes Marcos Junior for Appointing the Presidential Advisor on Peace, Reconciliation and Unification General Carlito Guansing Galvest Junior, F.P., Retired as the New Secretary of the Department of National Defense." Author, Authors, Members of the Parliament, Emil Bahar Mawalil, Liza Alamiya, Suarto Angboluto, Rasool Mitmug Junior, Mahinta Angpatuhan, Don Mustafa Luong, and Rasool Ismail. Proposed Resolution Number One Hundred Forty-three entitled, "A Resolution Congratulating Secretary Carlito C. Galvest Junior for His Appointment as Secretary of Department of National Defense." Author, Member of the Parliament, Romeo Semah.
Mister Speaker, um, the... Mister Speaker, I move to consider proposed resolutions number one forty-one and one forty-three as simple resolutions, but now I just figured out that they refer to different, the titles are different. The first one is thanking the President and second is congratulating Secretary Galvest. Perhaps the authors, um, will, one of the authors, MP Emil Bahar Mawalil wishes to be recognized to give a simple statement about it.
The gentleman from Tabi Tawa is recognized.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh and a blessed new year. Uh, Mister Speaker, uh, members of this parliament, uh, or guests in the podium, uh, let me ask these questions. This question rather, how do we measures, how do we measure a man's integrity and competence? We do this through his work, his actions, and his words? Truly, when one fulfill his promises to build a progressive community in a dignified society healed of the chaos of war and filled finally with peace? Mister Speaker, my colleagues in this parliament, we believe that the appointment of Secretary Galvest to head the Department of National Defense is a powerful testament to his and thus the President's success in the peace process. Secretary Galvest, Mister Speaker, dear colleagues, has displayed great competence in his roles as a former military official, public servant, and a long-time peace advocate. Therefore, Mister Speaker, dear colleagues, in appreciation of his appointment by President Marcos, we respectfully urge our dear colleagues to support this resolution. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, I move to, I wish to move, make an omnibus motion to dispense with the periods of interpolation, period of amendment, and move to approve the proposed resolution subject to, um, the inclusion of all members of this parliament, Mister Speaker.
There is a motion, uh, to this, an omnibus motion to dispense with the period of interpolation and amendment and, uh, another motion, uh, the further motion to approve, uh, proposed resolution number one four one. What was the condition?
Inclusion of all members of the parliament in the, as authors.
Conversion to a plenary resolution.
Yun ba yon. All members present to be included, Mister Speaker.
Subject, uh, yeah, subject to the condition that this proposed resolution be authored by all members of the parliament present during today's session. It has been seconded, there being no objection, the omnibus motion of the floor leader is approved.
One-minute suspension, Mister Speaker.
One-minute suspension.
Forty-three, uh, the title appears to be different from the resolution portion. So the title is congratulating Secretary Galvest, but the resolution portion expresses gratitude and commendation to the President. With the permission of the principal author, MP Romeo Semah, can we consolidate this with, um, resolution number one forty-one? So...
There is a motion, there is a motion to consolidate proposed resolution number one four three to proposed resolution number one four one. It has been seconded, there being no objection, the motion is approved.
Next item, Mister Speaker, is proposed resolution number one forty-four. May we request the Secretary General to please read the title and the authors thereof.
The Secretariat is directed as requested.
Proposed Resolution Number One Hundred Forty-one entitled, "Resolution Amending the Calendar of Session of the First Regular Session of the Second Parliament." Authors, Members of the Parliament, Syaila Haadu Mama Albang, Raisa Jaduri, Liza Alamiya, Mosbir Alavdin, Eddie Ali, Mahinta Angpatuhan, Susana Anayatin, Mary Ann Hernado, Anna Tarhatabasman, Suarto Ismail, Matarol Istino, Edward Guera, Abdou Wahassim, Mahajarekbal, Paisal Karom, John Anthony Lim, Jose Lorena, Abiraup Magakuwa, Mordjani Makasalong, Amrosi Makatanong, Baylang Mantawil, Tawakal Midtimbang, Rasool Mitmug Junior, Obaida Pacasam, Randall Percasio, Ramon Piyang Senior, Romeo Semah, Said Sheikh, Aida Silongan, Kadel Sinulinding Junior, Aspar Usman, Basir Utu, Tarhatamaglangit, Pangalian Balindong, Lanang Ali Junior, Hatimil Hassan, Benjamin Luong, Abdul Karim Miswari, Omar Yaser Semah, Paisalintago, and Nabiltan.
Mister Speaker, this proposed resolution, um, is only correcting the earlier approved resolution because of, um, a missed period for session from March thirteen to March sixteen twenty twenty-three. Uh, there being no Members of the Parliament signifying to interpolate, I move, I wish to make another omnibus motion to, um, dispense with the period of interpolation and amendment and thereafter approval subject to style, Mister Speaker.
There is a motion to dispense with the period of interpolation on proposed, uh, resolution number one four four and the period of amendment and the further motion to approve the same subject to style. It's been seconded, there being no objection, the motion is approved. One-minute suspension.
Mister Speaker, the next item, uh, the next item in the Order of Business is bills on second reading. There's one bill on for second reading today. BTA Parliament Bill Number Thirty-seven, may we request the Secretary General to please read the title and the author.
The Secretariat is requested.
BTA Parliament Bill Number Thirty-seven entitled, "An Act Establishing the Bangsa Moro Science High School System," Providing Funds Therefore and For Other Purposes. Author, the Government of the Day.
Mister Speaker, may we give the floor and recognize the sponsor for MP Aida Silongan to deliver her sponsorship speech.
Yeah, the MP, the gentle, the lady from SGA, MP Engineer Aida Silongan is so recognized.
And Magian, floor leader, Syaila Haadu Mama. A'udzubillahiminasyaitonirradjim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillahi was salatu was salamuala rasulillah. Wa ala alihi wasahbi adjamain. Ammaabad. The interim Chief Minister of the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority. Honorable Ahud Alhads Murad Ibrahim. The Honorable Speaker, Attorney Ali Pangalian Balindong. The floor leader, Attorney Syaila Haadu Mama Albang. The deputy speakers, deputy floor leaders, my esteemed colleagues of this august body, guests, ladies and gentlemen. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh and good afternoon to each and everyone. Mister Speaker, the enactment of the Parliament Bill Number Thirty-seven, which aims to establish a regional science high school in the Bangsa Moro autonomous region in Muslim Mindanao, is a pioneering initiative that gives primary importance on improving the state of science education in the region. To better understand the state of our country's science education, Mister Speaker, it would be better for us to take into account the current realities facing this sector. In twenty nineteen trends in International Mathematics and Science Study, or TIMSS, are country laws behind other nations. The TIMSS is an international assessment instrument designed to provide reliable and timely data on mathematics and science achievement of more than seventy participating countries worldwide. The assessment is usually conducted every four years by the International Association for the Assessment of Academic Achievements since nineteen ninety-five. In twenty fifteen, the Commission on Higher Education, or CHED, released a report which showed that among the seven hundred twenty-five thousand one hundred eighty-three students enrolled in teaching education institutions, only seven percent, or six thousand nine hundred seventy-eight, are specializing in science. That figure has not improved significantly since then. In the twenty twenty DOST Scholarship Performance Report, BARM has the lowest number of passers compared to other regions in the country. Unfortunately, our region obtained only one point fifteen percent, or fifty students out of four thousand three hundred ninety-seven passers. Adding insult to injury, Mister Speaker, BARM does not have a Philippine Science High School campus compared to other regions across the country. In Mindanao alone, there are science high school campuses in the regions of Zambuanga Peninsula, central Mindanao, southern Mindanao, Socks Argent, and Caraga. If this unfortunate situation continues and is not fully addressed by the government, its impact would be insurmountable, not only on the state of our science education in the region, but the future of our Bangsa Moro learners as well. I firmly believe, Mister Speaker, that we can still reverse the trend if we start investing in science education now. At this juncture, Mister Speaker, it must be emphasized that the Bangsa Moro Organic Law regards science and technology as essential to national and regional progress. It also mandates the Bangsa Moro government to prioritize science, research, inventions, technology, education, and their development. Thus, it is but timely and urgent to appropriate funds for science education by establishing a regional science high school that is not only at par with the standards of current Philippine Science High School system in the country, but also integrates values education in the overall curriculum. Through this model, we will be able to strengthen the foundation of both science and faith in the lives of our Bangsa Moro learners in the region. Mister Speaker, the integration of values education in the proposed Bangsa Moro Science High School curriculum respects our belief in the, in the region as provided in the Bangsa Moro Organic Law. Here, we also inculcate among the learners the principle of moral governance. The aim is to simultaneously develop the learner's character while elevating their secular education. Mister Speaker, we envision to raise Apollo Bangsa Moro youth equipped with science, with scientific knowledge and moral values. We envision to produce Bangsa Moro scientists who value our natural resources and guard the sustainability of our environment because they are conscious that it is our collective responsibility before the Almighty. Inshallah, Mister Speaker, we will raise Bangsa Moro scientists that are morally upright. This is the beauty and peculiarity of our own Bangsa Moro Science High School system. Finally, Mister Speaker, I humbly appeal to the honorable members of this august I humbly appeal to the honorable members of this august body to seriously consider the plight of our Bangsa Moro learners who will enormously benefit from the establishment of a science high school in the region and become a future scientist, engineers, and technologists, inshallah. In connection with this, I am urging this august body to hasten the passage of this bill. Before I end my speech, please join me as we show to you a three-minute video of the perspective of the proposed Bangsa Moro Science High School. Thank you very much, and wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Mister Speaker, I move to refer BTA Parliament Bill Number Thirty Seven to the committees, Committee on Science and Technology and Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management. So moved.
There is a move to refer uh Parliament Bill Number one
Thirty seven.
Thirty seven, number thirty seven to the, to those committee, Committee on Science and Technology and Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management. Is there any second? It's already seconded, the chair de place, Mr. Speaker, was approved.
Mister Speaker, there being no other matters in the or order of business, I move to adjourn today's session, Mister Speaker.
The session for today is adjourned until tomorrow at one thirty in the afternoon. May we request all Members of the Parliament to attend the turnover ceremony of two vases uh given by the subatra in the OCM uh steps. Usarapan at at four o'clock, at four o'clock in this afternoon.
Mister Speaker, can we have a photo?
Yes, photos.